We'll get started with our second forum. And I will say I've never managed ten candidates before, but here we go. Eleven, ten, eleven. So this will be interesting. So we did randomly seed them, and there are two candidates up here, I don't know why this is doing that, who are running for special election for a shorter seat. So raise your hand if you're running for the special election. There you go. And the rest of them, smile. They are running for three positions of full-term school board. But when it comes to the answers, they're all going to answer similar questions. They are not going to answer all of the audience's questions because we don't want the same answer ten times. So we don't say same as her, same as her, same as him, same as him. So there are some questions that they will answer. They will however, so this is the part where I say take notes, if there's a topic that was addressed to another group and you want to answer that one, you're going to get one minute to do that before your final statements. Okay? So take notes, don't fall asleep. I've got evil charts to keep you awake. So there you go. All right. We'll go back to my preamble here. Again, the League of Women Voters is a non-profit, nonpartisan organization that is volunteer-based at the local, state, and national level to encourage citizens to participate in government. And we do study and take stands on issues, but we never endorse nor support political candidates nor parties. Just to remind you, same with the North Hennepin Area Chamber of Commerce. So with eleven people up here, we're just going to get right in there. And these questions, they will all answer. So the first question is, for one, in one minute, tell us about your background and previous school district involvement that support your candidacy for this position. So here we go. Group one, our first responder is Ms. Quigley. Introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Myamun Quigley, and I've had many opportunities to be involved in the district. I actually navigated as a Liberian female through the district from kindergarten through 12th grade, so I went to Zane Wood, Northview, and graduated from Osseo, class of all four. As I've had many great experiences, I've also seen a lot of opportunity for growth. I have three boys who are three, five. Isaac goes to Elm Creek and Aiden goes to Osseo Middle, so I've had a lot of opportunities to run summer programming at Osseo Middle while, where I facilitated evidence-based curriculums. I also did a lot of out-of-school time with a lot of our students of color and our white students while I integrated cultural education as well as social and emotional behavior. I've done a lot with my current position where I'm a multicultural liaison with the Brooklyn Center Police Department at Garden City and Willow Lane, just bringing family engagement together and cultural perspectives. And my background's in public health.
Thank you. Ms. Sheldon Woodcock.
Good evening. Hopefully you can hear me. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and the North Hennepin Chamber of Commerce for inviting us tonight. My family has lived in Brooklyn Park for over 25 years. Our children attended the Osseo schools. And my husband and I made a very conscious decision to move to Brooklyn Park because we wanted to live in a community that was more diverse. You see, I became a mother through adoption, and I have these two absolutely gorgeous, beautiful, brown-skinned young adults now, and an absolutely gorgeous 10-month-old grandson. And we wanted them to be in a school district that accepted children for who they are rather than what they looked like. I taught at Elm Creek, and I knew about the care and compassion that kids received. I retired after 40 years as being an educator. My background is in special education and educational equity. I spent 17 years as an education policy specialist with the Minnesota Department of Education.
Thank you. Mr. Goya.
Hi, my name is Ceezy Goya. I'm an immigrant, and I moved here from Texas after having a bachelor's in mathematics and a bachelor's in electric engineering to Minnesota to work. I got here and saw the inequities in the school when I tried to tutor kids, and so I decided to leave engineering job, go back to school to Augsburg, get a degree in education, and into the classroom. So that's who I am. I am a math teacher. I got my start at Maple Grove Junior High School, now Maple Grove Middle, and I've been teaching at Brooklyn Center High School for the last seven years. I am their curriculum expert in mathematics. I sit on the State Board for Licensing. I also tutor trio and upper bound to kids who are first-generation students. Been doing that the last five years at Hennepin Tech. I've also tutor in the community where I've gone out to apartment complexes to tutor kids who can't stay at home. So my involvement in the district has been huge. I got my start in the district, and the most important thing is I am a teacher and I understand the issues.
Thank you. Ms. Moscah Jones.
Hi, I'm Jackie Moscada-Jones. I've been a teacher for 27 years. I've taught most age levels, including in the Osseo School District, for 12 years. I'm currently working in Columbia Heights School District. I have four children who are grown in our biracial part of the LGBTQ community and have dealt with mental health and special needs. So as you can see, I have a diverse background that would benefit the district. I know what teachers are dealing with right now. I'm on the Equity Team where I work. I've developed curriculum. I've learned that it's important to listen to students and to families. I've learned that relationships change the world and school environment. I have learned that schools work better when the school board listens and puts students first. We need experienced teachers like myself to help learn from our history and who are optimistic about the future. That's who I am.
Thank you. Mr. Dostal.
Hello, my name is David Dostal. I moved to the area about four years ago with my wife and three kids who are all in Rice Lake, and I'm a 10-year former naval officer and four years in the corporate sector. I've been involved in the district through the Enrollment Capacity Management and Advisory Committee, which, if you're unaware, is a group of parents, citizens, staff, and teachers who look at some of the capacity issues we deal with and provide advice to the superintendent and school board. What I'd like to do on the school board is bring some of the best practices I've learned in the military and the corporate sector into how we make decisions and execute different policies and strategy on the school board. I think we can get more rigorous in how we develop plans and implement them, and we can also be better at communicating and implementing change across the district so we can ensure parents and students are well-involved in that process throughout. Thanks.
Thank you. And Ms. Dawson-Walton.
Hi, I'm Kelsey Dawson-Walton. I grew up in Brooklyn Park where my mom still lives, and now my husband and I are raising our family in Maple Grove. We have four children, three of our children, our school agent, attend Osseo Public Schools. I work at Hennepin County, leading countywide strategic engagement. My decision to run was very intentional. The value of education and service was instilled in me by my parents. My dad, who passed away, spent his entire career dedicated to student success and getting parents involved in their children's education. My mom, she'll be here later tonight, also spent her career dedicated to education, and she's my greatest role model. I watched her receive her doctorate in education, and now she leads Youth Link, a nonprofit serving homeless youth, which is a growing population in our district. I've continued this legacy with being active in our district. I'm a Girl Scout leader, a PTO events chair, classroom volunteer, and I've served many volunteer roles, and I was selected to serve on the Maple Grove Middle School Parent Advisory Council. My background in district involvement positions me well to lead the charge to build bridges in our district, which we're in desperate need of.
Thank you. All right, group two, Ms. Alexander.
Hi, I'm Bridgette Alexander, and my background is I have a degree in early childhood development, and I grew up in North Minneapolis and then later on in my childhood moved to Brooklyn Center and later on moved to Brooklyn Park. I graduated at the Anoka-Hennepin School District, so I wasn't in Osseo area schools myself, but I have a third grader at Birch Grove Elementary, which is our arts magnet school. And I, my involvement in the district has primarily been at Birch Grove. I'm now the PTO president and have been highly involved in the school there since he began in kindergarten. Over the last year, I've become more involved with the district happenings, and I feel like I am positioned to be a strong candidate for school board because I'm good at listening to people. I have a diverse background myself, and I'm open to people's opinions. I'm open to listening to educators and parents and families in our district and students in our district in order to make change in our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brigette.
My name is Jim Brigette. My wife, Carrie, and I have three children. My youngest is currently attending Maple Grove Senior High School, and my older two are recent graduates. I've been a homeowner in Maple Grove for over 20 years, and I work as a principal, electrical engineer, and research and development for a local medical device company. For school involvement, I'm completing my second four-year term on the school board, serving as treasurer and currently as vice chair. I am also a member of the Policy Committee and have served on the District Planning and Advisory Council, DPAC, as well. I've also served as a mentor for the Crimson Robotics Team. I've completed the training provided by the Minnesota School Board Association and have attended multiple education conferences in my school board role. I believe that my experience on the school board and my background as a problem solver can continue to be beneficial to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Craig.
Thank you. First off, thank you to the League of Women Voters and the North Hennepin Area Chamber of Commerce for this opportunity tonight. It's a valuable part of the election process, and I'm grateful to be here. I also want to say thank you, and I'm proud of the rest of us here running tonight. It's not easy to be up here expressing our views and opinions, so I'm proud of us all and I'm glad to be here. Lastly, thank you to all of you for being a part of this process. I'm sure you have other things you could be doing tonight, but I'm grateful that you're here with us as well, so thanks again. My name is Jessica Craig. I have three daughters who attend Osseo area schools. I was first elected, I'm also a resident of Maple Grove, and I was first elected to school board in 2014. I currently serve as board clerk. While on the board, I have served on the district's negotiations team for teachers, principals, and various other bargaining groups. I have served on the property committee and other committees as well. I've also attended AMSD meetings, MSBA conventions, and workshops, et cetera. Previously, I've served as vice chair on the Fernbrook PTO. I have served as co-chair of the carnival committee at Fernbrook Elementary. And, oh, I'm getting the stop sign. Oh, I'm sorry. I'll end it there. But most importantly, I have three daughters in my dis, in the district, and I see how our policies play out day to day, so I guess I'll end it there. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Simmons.
Good evening. My name is Tanya Simons, and I'm running because I believe we're at a critical point in our district with our scorecard moving in the wrong direction, and this next board accountable for hiring a superintendent will be charged with improving results. I am the mom of two, the wife of a teacher, a 16-year Brooklyn Park resident. I received my accounting degree and MBA from the U of M's Carlson School of Management. I've worked for a local Fortune 500 company for the past 18 years, holding a variety of finance leadership positions and managing multimillion-dollar budgets. I currently work in continuous improvement, where I'm responsible for evaluating how we work today and improving how we work globally in the future. I've used my skill set as a city budget commissioner and as a board member for the Hennepin County Community Action Partnership. I volunteered with youth throughout my life, including mentoring high school students and as a big sister. I was a high school cross-country coach and track coach at Johnson High School for several years and served in the children's ministry at my church. I'll bring not only my passion for youth, but my full professional and leadership experience to ensure our district not only meets, but exceeds our mission for all of our students.
Thank you. And Ms. Clayman.
Hi, thank you for having me here tonight. I'm a registered nurse in the birth center at Hennepin Healthcare, formerly HCMC. I work with patients of varying backgrounds and levels of education, patients who speak little or no English, patients who are homeless or have limited support. I treat every patient with dignity and respect and meet them at their level to help them meet their needs. I appreciate and respect different cultures, viewpoints, and beliefs, and always consider these when I educate and individualize care for my patients. When I'm not working, I'm raising two students in our district. I have a seventh grader at Osseo Middle and a 10th grader at Park Center. Both children also attended Weaver Lake Elementary, where I was an avid volunteer in the classroom, and with the PTA. I served two years as PTA secretary, two years chairing the school carnival, and also participated in many subcommittee work for the PTA. Thank you.
All right, so for the next question, we're going to start with group two. Get ready for random order, sort of. Do you feel the district is doing a good job of educating its students and preparing them for post-secondary education or for entry into the workforce? Why or why not? Our first responder will be Ms. Clayman. This is still one minute. Thank you.
The district's overall graduation rate is 84 percent. That figure is misleading on two levels. The white student graduation rate is almost 92 percent, followed by Asian 91, black 71, and Hispanic 67. So fewer students of color graduate compared to their white peers, but that is not as concerning to me as the proficiency levels of our graduates. According to recent test score data, 75 percent of our white students meet or exceed reading standards. In comparison, 57 percent of Asian, 41 percent of Hispanic, and 37 percent of black students met or exceeded the standards. In math, 63 percent of white students are considered competent. At the same time, 42 percent of Asian, 23 percent of Hispanic, and abysmal 17 percent of black students are considered proficient at math. We are graduating students that can't do math. We are failing to prepare our students of color for functioning in the real world.
Ms. Alexander.
I don't want to sound completely negative because I myself know personal stories of graduates of the Osseo Area School District who are doing great things with their life. But if we look at our graduation rates, if we look at our proficiency rates, like Ms. Clayman said, we are doing a mediocre job. If you look on par with the rest of the state, we're right on par with them, but is that the best that we want for our students? No. We should expect to be a great school district, and we can be a great school district if we look at the achievement gap as an opportunity gap and bring everybody up to high standards, have high standards for all of our students, and take intentional action to bring all of our students up to those standards. We need to make change in our district and be bold about that change in order to make us a great district. Thank you.
Ms. Simons.
Well, I think really the question is, do our parents and our students believe that we're doing a good job of educating and preparing them for their next step? And do our teachers believe that they have the support and the tools needed to best prepare students for the future? In speaking with parents across the district, I've heard some amazing stories of many students finding their path, whether it's through the specialized magnets, the advanced placement curriculums, or extracurricular. I think this is a core strength of our district, and we can build on it by adding more options to meet our students' needs, including expanding languages earlier and more options to meet our students' technical and trade career pathway needs. I've also heard significant concerns from parents on issues impacting outcomes, including the clear achievement gap, capacity in class sizes, and safety and behavior at some of our schools. When I speak with teachers and administrators, many are seeing more support resources are needed to enable teachers to run their classrooms effectively and to support the social and academic progress of our students. As I look at our results, our trends are moving downward, and we need to act to reverse this trend, or we will lose students, which we've already lost a third, to other districts and other options.
Mr. Brigette.
Did you hear me?
I don't know, but go ahead and start.
So the question was, do I feel the district is doing a good job of educating its students and preparing them for post-secondary education and entry in the workforce? Why or why not? I'd say yes, for the most part, although we are having mixed results. I will say I am proud of the dedication and tireless efforts of our staff. We have some fantastic staff working very hard, but these are difficult problems. When I asked my children and their friends, when they came back from their first year at college, to find, to compare and contrast the education they received at Osseo area schools compared to their peers in their freshman classes, they told me they felt very well-prepared and ahead of most of their peers in their classes. And I think we can take some pride in that, but there is much work to do because we have, from our graduation rate statistics, achievement gaps, and disproportionate suspension rates, there's a lot more than we can do, and we have a lot of area focus, areas that we can focus on to improve. Thank you.
And Ms. Craig.
Thank you. I'll agree with Jim Brigette on many points there. I do believe the district is doing a good job at preparing our students. Our graduation rates, as mentioned previously, are above state average. We're missing about 30 percent of our students. They're not, they're not finishing school, so we need to find out how to engage that population. For whatever reason, they're not just able to achieve finishing school. But if you, if you pull up the data even more and you look at seven-year graduation rates, we are actually phenomenally above the state average, so we are graduating kids in special circumstances, English as second language students. They're finishing in seven years, and our rates are very good at the seven-year level. Anyways, I'll get back into what we offer as Osseo. We have wonderful magnet programs, as previously described. Osseo Senior High has an amazing auto tech program, and kids can graduate from that program in Osseo Senior High and enter the auto tech industry with a job. So we are thinking outside the box, and we are providing opportunities for our students, but there is a lot of work to do, and I'll stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Group one, same question. How do you feel the district is doing at preparing students for the future? First responder is Ms. Sheldon Woodcock.
Yes, I think the district is doing a good job of educating our students when compared to comparing our results to state averages. The district graduation rate is 84 percent, which is higher than the state average of 82.7 percent, but falls below the ultimate goal of 90 percent. 83 percent of our students, though, are enrolled in post-secondary programs as compared to state, which is 75 percent of the students. However, when we drill down into that data, we find that there are disparities based on race and socioeconomic indicators and special populations, and that's where the seven-year rate really shows that we do a good job. Two of our high schools have been prioritized to need comprehensive support under the Every Student Succeeds Act because of their four-year graduation rates, and they, that fall below the cutoff for English learners, Latino, and special education students. As a school board member, I will work to ensure that our schools are able to nurture a wide range of skills and interests so that all students...
Thank you. I know it's a minute. I know.
I wasn't looking.
I know you weren't. Mr. Goya.
That wasn't impossible.
I know.
So I'm going to answer this question. I'm going to use myself in the two capacities that are most important. Number one, as a teacher. I'm a math teacher, so this is what I spend my days during summer, digging into. And I will answer you with a definitive no. No, the school district is not doing what it ought to be doing. Yes, we can sit there and look at graduation rate and look at the rate of kids achieving, and the school board member can say, you know what, you ask some kids and they say they're doing well, and they, when they went to colleges and they saw that they were ahead of their classes, but where are we picking those students that we're asking? Right? In the same district, I can pick two students, two different students, one from Brooklyn's, one from Maple Grove, and they have two different stories. So are we just wanting to increase the graduation rate for the rich sake, or are we trying to increase quality graduates? That's, that's, that should be the biggest question. As a parent, if I send my child that graduates from a park center and have to go to the community college and do remedial, I say no. I say no to that. And I think the school board needs to refocus. The, one of the, the best workforce in this area is in the school district. Pay the teachers well, respect them, and then we do something better about that.
Thank you. Ms. Moscah Jones.
What Ceezy said? I'm just kidding. As a teacher, I know there are passionate teachers in this district that want to do what's best for their kids. I know they're working really hard. They're working against constraints. Our district is not doing what we can be doing to make sure that all of our students succeed. You all heard the data thrown around up here, and I looked at the data compared to free and reduced rate, lunch rates. It's not a poverty issue. There's very little difference between a black kid on free and reduced lunch and a black kid that's not on free and reduced lunch. This is a more systemic issue. It's a state issue. We need to attack it more holistically. We need to be working with the larger community to find solutions. We need to have high expectations for all kids. We need to understand all the social problems. I'm ready to dig in and figure out what's the best way to attack this from a multiple-pronged solutions.
Thank you. Mr. Dostal.
I would agree with the, the perspective that, in general, the overall statistics seem to show we're high. However, when you dig in, it's not just the single-point average that matters. It's also the variation in what we're talking about here, and so we have some people, huge groups of this, the district that are doing extremely well, and then we have hu, huge groups in the district doing extremely poorly. And when you stratify that further based on location, whether that's school, geography, race, ethnicity, or other developmental factors that we measure on within the state, you can really get predictive outcomes for who's going to achieve and who isn't. And so to me, that's a huge problem. The fact that you can really look at someone and see where they come from and look at their biographical data and basically have a reasonably good prediction of where they'll, they'll come out in this district is a big problem. I think what we need to do is get better at really analyzing the root cause and not just committing to courses of action because it seems the, like, the appropriate or the immediate thing to do to address that solution.
Ms. Dawson-Walton.
You know, I kind of looked at this question a little differently. I believe that our school district is headed in the right direction in preparing our students for post-secondary education and entry into the workforce. However, the tides have turned, and we can't think in a linear way anymore about post-secondary options. It isn't about a four-year institution, not that college isn't an option, but it's also for everyone, it isn't for everyone in how we can be earning before learning sometimes. The project, the projection out there is that there'll be a workforce shortfall of 300,000 in 2024. And our school district is part of the solution to this tight labor market. We are the fifth-largest district, one of the most diverse school districts around, and we don't have a shortage of talent, clearly. I believe we have some of the best and the brightest students and educators, and we have the ability to be a strong solution and partner because we have the future workers. We need to be preparing our students differently, and this district has already started to make the investment in career pathways, like medical support services, food product processing systems, and information, excuse me, information technology. I'd like to take these great programs that our district has and double down to become champions around career pathways. Thank you.
It's a minute. I know. And Ms. Quigley, please.
So, this question. Like I said, I navigated through this district K through 12. If you know me, I'm a little obsessed with this district, and I strategically purchased my house with my partner, who also navigated this district K through 12, so our kids could go to certain schools. My kid's in AP classes. He's gifted. He's always been gifted, but I see the same issues that I saw in 1992, 1999, 2004. We're failing our students of color, and I think it's so hard when it's not affecting you for you to see that. But it's not only our students of color. Our white students could be doing a lot better either, and I know when we talk about race, it gets uncomfortable, but these are things that we need to talk about so we can grow and stop failing our kids. And what I will have to say is, yes, there's the workforce program that the district has implemented. There's Brooklink, where I sit on the board for Brooklink, which strategically places students with paid internships at Medtronic, Boston Scientific, within municipalities. So are we doing good work? Yes. Could we do better? Absolutely.
All right, our next one-minute question. We'll start again with group one. Do you believe District 279 is performing well in closing the achievement gap? And if not, what could you propose to enhance that effort? The first responder for that one will be Mr. Goya.
Okay, so, can you hear me? Here's what we can do. We can stop the artificial shortages that we create when we have this lottery system, wherein if my kid wants to go to an art magnet, I have to play the lottery, and if they're full, then that kid has to go to a private school or they have to just abandon what they want to do. What you first need to do is to have people who understand curriculum and make sure you have a unified curriculum across the district. So as it stands right now, if I live in Maple Grove and my kid has been going to Maple Grove all along, and I moved to Brooklyn Park for whatever reason, and my kid has to go to Park Center, my kid now has to do IB, even though he or she had not been doing MYP or the, or the, or the primary years program. And the teachers in the room know that is a problem. Or if I were to leave from Brooklyn Park to move into Maple Grove, I would have the same situation. So what can we do is have people who understand curriculum, who understand pedagogy, sit down and see how we might be able to unify a curriculum across the district. It makes no sense to have one district with so many curriculums. It confuses the teachers also.
Thank you. Ms. Moscah Jones.
Let's be honest, the state is not doing well at the achievement gap, and neither is our school district. While we're making slight strides, we need to work to address the achievement gap by first acknowledging that it is an opportunity gap. This way, we're not blaming achievement on the students, but on us as a system. We need overall systemic change. What the research and my own personal experience in teaching has taught me, this is a question that deserves way more than one minute, so here's my bullet list. Have high standards for all students regardless of circumstances, period. Provide as much early intervention as possible, including early childhood education, mental health services, and social-emotional curriculum. Cultural competency of all staff, including bus drivers, lunch service professionals, et cetera. Have welcoming and safe schools for all families. Relationships with families and family involvement is the highest indicator of student success tied with early interventions and education. Work with the community to engage the entire community in the successes of our society through education.
Thank you. Mr. Dostal.
The achievement gap has been largely stagnant in the district. It hasn't closed in the last five years or any movements largely statistically insignificant. So we have to get better at analyzing what we really think are the root causes, finding ways to measure them, and then apply the resources specifically to deal with that. And as part of that, we have to be better at measuring outcomes, not just waiting for the new MCA scores to come out or the new measures in graduation rates. I think the way we need to address that is, like I said, resource allocation, getting better at it, and getting better at assessing risk and making priority decisions. Second, I think we need to expand early childhood education, which I think is critical to getting people set up on the right track. And then third, I think we need to look at where we can really expand local leadership and give principals and the staff at the local level the appropriate level of freedom in order to deal with their problems. The problems that a student on one side of the district will face in a school and what that principal deals with are going to be significantly different compared to other schools within the district, and the amount, the more freedom we can give there, the better that they'll be at solving those issues.
Thank you. Ms. Dawson-Welton.
You know, the numbers don't lie. You heard them here. There's a debilitating gap in performance indicators among our district. However, what we aren't collectively addressing is the root cause. And the root cause starts at home. We won't be able to enhance any efforts alone as a district. We need partnerships. It's not a symptom of only the district. This is a problem in our region. Our disparities are stark and impact our vitality and competitiveness as a region, and it literally touches every vein in employment and our justice system and transportation, income, housing, health. And the common thread is our families, which in turn impact our education system because education is supposed to be the leveling the playing field for everyone. I believe strongly we need families engaged. And then on the other hand, you know, we have schools in the district that are performing well and have significantly improved in certain areas around the achievement gap. We need to be looking at that recipe for success all the time. We need to start naming it, and we need to start talking about it and bringing some action. And we just have to, we have to, we can't look at it just as an education problem alone. It impacts all of us.
Ms. Quigley.
Yeah, so I think the biggest thing is looking at each building and what they need. As somebody who has a background in public health, I think it's important to understand the diversity in our district, look at the trauma, start talking about resources, bringing communities together, as well as meeting families where they are. Something that I will shout out to the district is that they actually did start an equity fundamental training where they are training everybody in the district, from custodial staff to students, teachers, families, and I think that that is going to help. But I also think another thing is, I went to visit Zane Wood not that long ago, and I love the diversity in that building because the staff really does meet the students in that district when you look at diversity, and I think it's huge because you understand the cultural components and you understand where it comes to behavior and discipline, what will work for certain families and what won't. I also feel that with our EL students, sometimes we hold them in certain levels. Language does not equal intelligence. Just because someone is an EL learner does not mean that they cannot succeed in mathematics or other areas. So it's really important that we don't pocket these EL learners in certain areas because that's only going to hurt us as a district.
Thank you. And Ms. Chevlin Woodcock.
So one thing that you need to know about me is I'm kind of one of these nerdy, big-picture thinkers. You know, I have a doctorate, I'm a scientist, so I need to use data to analyze important issues such as the student achievement. I'm not a flashy stump speaker. I'm not going to create a frenzy. I'm not going to make promises that can't be kept. But when we talk about the achievement gap, we need to look at multiple indicators, not just one area. We need to look at our mission and our vision and examine things like attendance and truancy and student perceptions of what's going on. And are our kids ready for kindergarten? And are our kids reading by third grade? And what are our graduation rates? And all of this needs to be looked at through a lens of equity. Oseo has several proven strategies in place to work on closing the achievement gap, both academic and behavioral. Though some of these programs have only been in place for a short period of time, they're showing some phenomenal growth.
All right. Group two, achievement gap. You guys are making my choice very difficult. Wow. Awesome. Okay. Ms. Craig.
Thank you. Closing the achievement gap or the opportunity gap has been a priority for both the state and our district for some time now. We've employed a lot of strategies, multi-pronged approach to solving the problem in our district, and we know that there is not one single solution to this problem. We know that it is a, it's going to take a strong effort over time to watch this achievement gap close. Again, it's not just a problem for Osseo area schools, it's a statewide issue. We know that Minnesota is the worst-performing state at gap-closing performance in the country. But Osseo area schools has been bold in trying new strategies, from working with our regional centers of excellence for our Title I schools, providing differentiated support, small class sizes, professional development. I'm in favor of using all these different strategies. Our former superintendent was very creative in creating community partnerships with our North Hennepin Community College, and where we are actively recruiting teachers. I'm so sorry, I'm not sticking to scripts, so thank you.
I know, I know. It's okay. Ms. Simons.
The answer is no. The data shows us we're not. At yesterday's board work session, we saw we're middle of the road to underperforming versus the state on growth, achievement, and attendance measures. We have a comprehensive achievement and integration plan, world's best workforce plan, and a Department of Equity devoted to solving this challenge, so I don't think the solution is more. I think we need to critically evaluate what we're doing and determine if we're delivering the outcomes intended. I want to ensure our teachers and administrators have the flexibility to stop doing what's not working and to share their insights as to what is working so we can reinvest in more successful interventions that the data demonstrates is effective. I look at Park Brook, for example, and the outstanding academic achievement progress they've made, and how they've dramatically reduced behavior and suspension incidents through innovative approaches. I want these types of insights to be shared and learned across buildings. I also recognize that we need partnerships and solutions that take place outside of schools. So I want to maximize the partnerships with our city's programs, such as Brooklyn Park's youth programs, to surround our students that are at most risk.
Thank you. Mr. Brigette.
So do I believe the District 279 is performing well in closing the achievement gap? No, I don't. I don't believe we're closing it. Data shows that. This is a stubborn problem that requires multiple approaches to solve. If there was a silver bullet, we would have resolved this long ago. We've looked at best practices, practices at neighboring districts, we've looked at practices across the country, and tried to bring what we've found that works here. The problems in our communities do play out in our schools. Children that are in poverty, children that are English language learners or lack family support have continued to struggle. And so I think that one suggestion I'd heard discussed was about bringing more social services support into the schools so that kids can be, their needs can be met where they are. And I do like that idea, and I think that's something we could explore. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Clayman.
On recent elementary school test scores, we had a three-point, three-percent average increase in students failing to meet standards for math proficiency. Black students showed an increase of more than twice that number, at six-point-eight percent. So apparently, we actually opened the achievement gap a little bit wider. I would like to continue the free preschool program, someday expanding to start at age three. I would eliminate out-of-school suspensions for all but the most dangerous offenses. Maintaining low class sizes in the early elementary years should continue to be our norm. When we are unable to reduce the class size, we add staff or volunteers in the classroom. I would create a position of a family engagement worker at each school, whose focus would be to connect with engaged families, thereby building a solid education bridge between school and home. Finally, we need to eliminate hiring biases in and barriers to employing teachers of color, particularly black teachers. Studies show that a black student who has just one black teacher in elementary school is significantly more likely to graduate and consider college.
Thank you. And Ms. Alexander.
Well, it is hard to go on a question like this after everybody has had such great answers. I mean, I think almost all bullet points have been hit as far as, we need to use research-based solutions in order to close the achievement gap and address this opportunity gap because if this high percentage of our students of color, of our underserved community students are not being proficient at graduation or not graduating, we are failing our student body because we are a very diverse district. We need to look at schools that have been successful and school districts that have been successful in closing the achievement gap. We need to listen to our communities. We need to have an open mind and actually expand the equity policy to include actionable items. Like I said, we need to be bold. I mean, we need to be inclusive of our families and our educators in closing the achievement gap.
There we go. All right. Last one-minute question. Now you know why we're going to switch it up in the second round. Okay. Last one-minute question is, that you got in advance. Do you support the district's continued efforts toward universal pre-K for all four-year-olds in the district? Why or why not? First responder is, for group two, Ms. Simons.
Well, as the daughter of a Head Start teacher, I certainly have a passion to ensure access to opportunities that help our students be most prepared for successful outcomes. To me, this includes ensuring our educational investments deliver the result intended and that we maximize efforts to drive long-term benefits for our students. In the case of pre-K education, studies published since two thousand and two, including a two thousand and sixteen Vanderbilt University five-year study, show us that pre-K does provide early cognitive and noncognitive skill benefits. Unfortunately, they also show that by the time students reach the third grade, these benefits no longer carry through. Given these overall facts, I think our current pre-K programming is working well to deliver early positive gains and that we're doing a good job of locating these programs and creating accessibility where it's needed most. However, because of the lack of long-term benefits, I think it would be wise to invest additional resources in alternatives to help students in the longer term. But certainly, given the state activity on this issue, it's something we need to continue to monitor, be aware of, and be prepared for potential future changes.
Ms. Clayman.
I strongly support our efforts towards universal pre-K. In a longitudinal study in Chicago, researchers followed disadvantaged students from age three to age twenty-eight. The control group attended school as they normally would, with no additional early interventions or support. The second group attended preschool at age three and had continued support through third grade. Study outcomes showed a strong correlation with early intervention and increased graduation, decreased felony crimes, increased post-secondary education, and overall increased income and health. A University of Minnesota study showed that all-day pre-K can close the achievement gap, where seventy-eight percent of white students were prepared for kindergarten compared to seventy-four percent of black children. Our district must do whatever we can to provide equitable educational opportunities to close the achievement gap so all children can be successful in school and beyond. And early education is clearly proven to deliver that goal.
Ms. Alexander.
I feel like I don't need a minute for this one. Yes, I would strongly support expanding upon our current preschool program. I think early childhood education, obviously, that's where my degree is, is vitally important for closing the achievement gap and for preparing our students to be successful. There are things we can measure and there's things we can't measure, and for a student to come into kindergarten and be vastly disadvantaged by having, you know, for whatever reason, not access to preschool as some of their counterparts, that negative beginning to their educational career carries over with them for a significant amount of time. It's important that our students come into kindergarten prepared. I think I've heard said quite a few times that preschool is the new kindergarten. Our students have so many standards to meet. Right away when they get into elementary school, it's important that all students have access to preschool, and we need to be the ones to provide that to them.
Ms. Craig.
Thank you. This is another subject area where philosophically, it's a great idea. The question becomes, how do you implement it and what are the funding mechanisms in place to support it? So currently, our pre-K programs are offered through our community education department. It's separate enrollment from regular district enrollment. We receive state money right now for selected sites in our district. Not all sites have free pre-K programming. Without that state money, we would not be able to provide free pre-K programming. So the answer is, so long as there is state funding available, I would be in support of providing free pre-K education to our four-year-olds. I would not support it if it were compulsory. I think it should remain a choice for parents. It's not always a good fit for every family, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
And Mr. Brigette.
Yes, I do support it because I think it would help us meet our ReadWell by Three goal as part of the world's best workforce legislation. But this could also be implemented on a sliding fee scale so the expense can be managed. We always have competing demands for budget capacity. We use our mission and our goals for the district to help guide us in those budget decisions. Thank you.
All right. Group one. First responder is Ms. Muscat Jones. It'll start.
Was waiting for my mic, sorry. So my background is in early childhood. I've taught college in early childhood. I've looked at all the research, including ones that were already presented, and the vast majority of research says that early childhood education is the biggest benefit towards our children and their future. There's up to a seven to eleven percent return rate on our investment in investing in early childhood education. The study about leveling out at third grade, if you look deeper into that study, there are some questions about whether that means maybe we're not having high enough standards later on, or maybe there's other mitigating factors. But the other thing is, what we know is that emotional development and social-emotional regulation is the key to being able to listen and think. Our brain is under stress, cannot think, and that is set by age five. We need to start at three.
Okay. Mr. Dostal.
As I said before, yes, I think it's critical to have it. Anecdotally, from my own experience, it was critical to my own kids as well as the kids in their class. One story I'll share is that there was a young girl in my middle child's ECFE class who didn't speak English when they started, and the teacher told the parents to not worry about it, speak their first language at home so the child wouldn't lose that. And by the end of the year, the child spoke perfect English just by picking it up at school. I think there's an invaluable component of socialization and how they integrate into the system that starts early, and perhaps that's not measurable in a test, but I think that will bear out in terms of how they integrate and interact with teachers and fellow students. In terms of the nature of that, I think we can continue pursuing a graduated funding model. I think it should be universal and find ways to help people who can't afford it get into it, and then I don't think it should be mandatory. I'd also question the idea that it needs to be all day. Perhaps it's an option, but I think ultimately, there is a lot of variables in there that we need to consider before we commit to that.
Thank you. Ms. Dawson-Welton.
Well, I absolutely support these efforts. My family benefited. My youngest daughter went to Garden City last year and had an incredible experience there. And it's about access. You know, we talk about the achievement gap. I mean, the way you start to get at the achievement gap is to provide access and reduce barriers. So even if it's a sliding fee scale or whatnot, I mean, it's still a burden on people's lives, and I don't think education should be that costly for people. I think that it starts to level the playing field. And I believe that, you know, high-quality pre-K makes a huge difference and sets the tone, and it really speaks to the mission of the school district, and it's about lifelong learning, and it's about creating opportunities and embracing the future with that.
Ms. Quigley.
So, fun story. I was actually born here. At six months, my dad graduated from Mankato State University, couldn't find a job, and he decided, we're moving back to Liberia. So from six months until the age of four years old, which is when kindergarten starts in Liberia, I lived there. And my parents stopped speaking our dialect to me because I wouldn't speak English, and I went to a Catholic school, and halfway through the year, the war started, so I had to come back here. And kind of like, Dostal was saying, I don't know how to speak my dialect. I'm the only one in my family that doesn't know how to speak my dialect, but if we would have been somewhere like pre-K and they told my mom, just keep speaking Gael to her, she'll learn English later. We also know, like everybody else said today, that if kids are engaged or interacting or attending ECFE and pre-K by third grade, they're at their grade-level reading. This closes the achievement gap. I don't even understand why it's a question, and it's a little frustrating when people talk about funding because you pay for something at the beginning to get the reward in the end, so I'm clearly all about it.
Ms. Chevlin Woodcock.
Yes, absolutely. I support the district's efforts towards universal pre-K programs. The research is very compelling. Children who have participated in pre-K programs enter kindergarten with better vocabularies, stronger pre-reading skills, and stronger pre-math skills. There's a strong link between early learning opportunities and student achievement. Many of the benefits that students get from pre-K, especially children in poverty, last a lifetime. Many of the benefits that students get from pre-K, especially children in poverty, last a lifetime. Many of you know or have heard of Dr. Brenda Cosilius, who is the Education Commissioner in Minnesota. She often credits Head Start, the Head Start experience that she was part of, as having a lifelong impact on her. We as parents chose to put our kids in a Montessori program because we had a daughter who didn't speak English at three years old. And so, she needed as much language stimulation as she could get. One of the things that I've done is I've visited all fifteen, so far, 15 of our schools and met the principals and staff and heard about what the programs are like.
Thank you. Mr. Goya?
So, I see this by the time they get to me in 11th and 12th grade. But I would say, yes, I support it and I think it should be accelerated. I think when we talk about the magic bullet to close the achievement gap, the silver bullet, I would give you this as the gold bullet. This closes the opportunity and achievement gap. Because we start to create an opportunity gap at four years old, when we say we can't fund these things. If budgets are supposed to be moral documents, let's fund what we find to be valuable. Stop the gap before it starts. The gap starts at four-year-old. Stop the opportunity gap there. So that I don't have to see kids in 11th grade that can't do math at a second-grade level. And you're expecting me in the 11th grade to be able to diversify my curriculum and my work so much so that I'd be able to get all those kids from second grade to 11th grade. I say, stop the gap before it starts. It starts at four-year-old, stop at a four-year-old.
Okay, here we go. We are now moving on to the 30-second answers. So, just to remind you, I'm going, one group per question. We're going to do separate questions. But you will have one minute before your final statements to address a topic that you liked from another group. Okay? So take notes, don't get sleepy. Group one, your first question is, what are the three most important attributes you will look for in a new superintendent? Wow, that's a great question. Okay, here we go. Mr. Dostal?
I'll name four. Well, two are similar. I think they need to have experience in a similar-sized district. They need to have experience with a racially diverse district. They need to have experience dealing with capacity issues, either opening or closing schools, or dealing with expansions within the district. And then last, I think the manner in which they achieve their outcomes is critical. So they need to be collaborative and be able to build a solid team that they can trust and who will trust, that will have the ability to give them open and honest feedback so they can bring it to us as a school board.
Ms. Dawson Walton?
The three attributes I think are most important is that they have to have a vision for the district. Where are we going? They need to have courage. The issues that we're facing, we are at a critical crossroads in the Osseo School District. And so they need to have the courage to, and be bold to come across those issues and address them. And they need to be really strategic and look at partnerships, look at different, you know, a lot of people talk about funding sources, but there's more than funding sources. There's human capital, there's people, there's resources, and how do we leverage our partnerships in the community to make the best district possible?
Ms. Quigley?
Yes, I think first and foremost, mine would be somebody who is willing and able to be a lifetime learner. Just because you're in a position like that, you still have to be willing to learn and grow. I would also say expansion. Our classroom sizes are all at max capacity. I think looking ahead and seeing where we can grow and build as a district is really important. And then, as well as somebody who has worked in a district similar to ours, when we talk about size and diversity as well, is huge. They have to understand our diverse population to be able to navigate that.
Ms. Shelvin Woodcock?
I think our superintendent needs to be a courageous and visionary leader, a community builder, be collaborative, and relentlessly pursue excellence and continuous improvement.
Thank you. Mr. Goya?
Well, I think first and foremost, our new superintendent needs to be knowledgeable. You have to know what you're going to be performing. The next thing is we need somebody who's innovative, who seeks for equity. Equity as not meaning taking something from somebody else and giving to somebody else, but as enracing everybody to a standard where they're able to achieve. We also need somebody who is willing to build a community. I call it building the village. Build a village where we have, in it, we have the students, we have parents, we have community, and we have staff. District 279 has one of the most competent and innovative staff. Make use of them.
All right. And Ms. Muscat Jones?
I worked in the district when Kate McGuire became superintendent. And one of the things she said to our staff, she visited all the staff, was that she likes to find out what the strengths are of each of her staff and use those strengths and really capitalize on that. That's the first thing that I would like to see, because I really think that's important. I also think that they need to understand equity and really, what it really means besides just a dictionary definition. And then I also think that when they're building community, they have to really look at engaging families because I think that's a piece that we don't address enough.
Here we go. Group two. You ready? What are your thoughts on dividing the school board by geography? In other words, electing board members by wards instead of at-large? First responder is Mr. Brigette.
I've met with a local group that has been kind of pushing that concept, and there are pros and cons to it. For example, this election year, there are four seats available. Get them all at large. They could all come from anywhere. They could all be Brooklyn Park or wherever. So it doesn't matter. So, I think that allows more flexibility if they're at large. But I can understand how people would feel misrepresented as not somebody from their community. But I think part of that has to do with building relationships and reaching across the district. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Craig?
Thank you. First of all, I think we need to recognize that it's not a board decision. This is a decision that would need to go to the ballot. What the board decides is whether or not that question appears on a ballot. It would have to appear in a special election. Special elections are very expensive. So that's the first thing to understand. I have spent time talking to our professional organization, Minnesota School Board Association, and it goes against their recommendations. Our policy advisor, Gary Lee, is very, very clear that voter wards would not be a good thing and actually, would actually be a step backwards.
Thank you. Ms. Clayman?
I've actually talked to community members about this. It's been brought up as I've gone door-to-door. And I actually think it's an idea that worth pursuing. So you don't have everybody on the board only from Maple Grove. You have more rich diversity. You have people that are really fighting for their area in Brooklyn Park and those schools on the east side.
Ms. Alexander?
I was asked about this when I first filed my candidacy by a constituent that messaged me personally and asked. And I, at that time, I hadn't looked into it much and I hadn't given much thought to it. But the more that I've given thought to it and taken in community leaders' input, the more that I've decided that, yes, I think, I'm not saying that me myself would be the one making that decision. I think that's something that, as Jessica pointed out, would need to be brought to the people. But I think we should bring that to the people because we have a very diverse district.
Thank you. And Ms. Simons? Please silence your cell phones or I'll come and thwart you. Okay, thank you. Ms. Simons?
Well, I think there's advantages and disadvantages to both systems of election. But I think there is a benefit when every single board member knows that they represent the entire district and that they know that when they're making a decision, it's for the decision and the betterment of every student regardless of what city that they live in. So, I think it can also enable better long-term decision-making as we think about what resources are needed across the district and at what time. So, I do think this is something, though, that is best placed in the voters' hands and the voters should be making that decision. There is a process by which the voters can put this on the ballot, and I would encourage them to do so if that's what their preference is.
All right. Group one. Hi. Okay, here we go. Please give the top three persons or roles that influence a student's education. First responder is Ms. Dawson Walton.
Family, number one, however that's made up, and teachers, absolutely educators in the system. And I think also, it's the experience. So it's other people and their families as well. So, building relationships with, when you're in class and developing those through sports or through various activities.
Ms. Quigley?
Yeah, I think that working with youth throughout my career, I can definitely say having a trusting adult or a mentor, I think that's something that I have been able to do. Bless kids' hearts, they think I'm a lot younger than I am. So they're able to relate to me a lot easier and I just become someone that's trusting in their life. I would definitely say teachers. I've seen just the relationship, somebody that you're seeing every day and having that relationship with and you can go to with issues. Students really do cling to their teachers or administration as well. And then I think, I think parents, I think parents do have a huge influence over education, especially culturally.
Ms. Shelvin Woodcock?
Well, one of the most important people that influence people's, kids' lives are their grandmothers. We'll just start there, okay? Obviously, family. But I have to, I'll tell you my story. I'm the first person in my family to have gone to college. And the only way I got to college was the fact that teachers told my parents she should go to college. And she should either be a scientist or a teacher. So I did both.
Grandparent bias there. All right, Mr. Goya?
Not at all.
Well, I would say, family, community, and a diverse staff. Let me tell you my lived experience every day. Ms. Clayman tried to quote, there was a study, and I really liked it, that when African-American students are introduced to an African-American teacher, there's power in there. I'll tell you, every day when I stand up in front of my classroom to deliver math pedagogy and you see in the eyes of those kids what they see, that they see themselves in me. And they go, this dude with this much accent is able to do this. I can do better. I think a diverse staff goes a long way.
Ms. Muscat Jones?
So if you look at the research and my experience, parents and family have a really important role. If they're up to 30% of their academic achievement, teachers have a very important role. And something that hasn't been mentioned yet is peers. And that's why I think it's really important to make sure that we're building community as schools because peers have influence over the other students. And if we can do a lot more peer engagement and community engagement, then they'll be more successful.
And Mr. Dostal?
I'll say, first and foremost, it's whoever that parental figure is, whether it's the biological parents or somebody else who's providing authority and guidance and mentorship in the home. Then I would say it's probably the peers and how they influence that. And I would say probably the proportion there varies by age. And obviously, as kids get older, parents potentially get less influential. And then I would say that the teachers in the school, particularly the either really good teachers or the really bad teachers. I think you remember the people who really inspire you and you remember the people who you really had a hard time with and made you feel poorly in some respect.
All right. Group two. Do you have any ideas on how to help the homeless students in our district, helping the homeless students in our district? Ms. Clayman, you have the first response.
I think trying to make things as normal and as, stick to the routine as they possibly can. I know that if they're homeless and they end up at a homeless shelter in Minneapolis, we pick them up, we bring them back to the school that they started in, so they can continue that. And also give them as much as extra support as we can, bridging that communication gap. What can we do to help them maintain that normalcy?
Ms. Simons?
Yeah, I think that this is a growing concern in our community. I think we've seen that. As I've worked and partnered with other organizations, I think for all of these challenges that are social concerns, we need to have really effective partnerships within our community. I think of Hope for Youth is a local organization who's doing a lot of innovative approaches to halt teen homelessness before it begins and intervene. So I think it's making sure that we're partnering and making those resources available in our buildings as well to help connect them to the students.
Ms. Craig?
Thank you. I serve on the board of the Brooklyn Bridge Alliance for Youth. That is one of our organizations here that this district partners with. And we have conversations about this all the time because we do have a large, rather large student population that is homeless within our district. Part of the key strategy is providing the transportation to and from school that they may not have access to. We do have newer youth homeless shelters. So providing those staples and stability is key. And we partner with organizations in the community already.
Thank you. Mr. Brigette?
One of the problems with homelessness with students is in identification. None of them want to stand up and say, oh, it's me, it's me, I need help. So trying to identify those students so that we can get them the services they need is key. However, that's very challenging. I remember we had a work session on this several years ago where this was one of the aspects mentioned. And the number that I'd heard was somewhere between 500 and 750 students in our district are homeless. So, what I said before about trying to bring social services into the school so they can get those things they need would be very helpful. Thank you.
And Ms. Alexander?
This is an issue that's close to my heart. I have an eight-year-old girl in my life that is currently displaced. She attends St. Paul School District and she is staying with family members in Minneapolis. She is bus to and from St. Paul every day. I think it is important to keep normalcy as much as possible. I think it's important to partner with social organizations in the school and be focused on keeping normalcy through confidentiality for those students, being hypercognizant of what they're going through and being connected with the social services for them.
All right. Group one. Did you seek the support of the unions that represent staff in our district? Why or why not? First responder is Ms. Quigley.
I did seek the support of the unions that represent teachers. I think first and foremost, teachers are the ones that are closely linked to our students every day. They have a difficult job. They are the ones who have to deal with behavior. I've been in a classroom trying to facilitate a curriculum within 35 minutes with 32 students. It's a difficult job and making sure that they have the resources and tools to be successful so our students are is really important.
Next is Mr. Goya.
Yes, I did seek and was offered and accepted the endorsement of the Education Minnesota. Because again, the entire reason I'm running is to build a community, to build a village. And the most important people in that village are the ESPs, the teachers, the bus drivers, and everybody who surround our kids when they come to school. So yes, I proudly sought and I proudly accepted the endorsement of Education Minnesota. Because again, if it takes a village to educate a child, we need all educators on board.
Mr. Dostal?
Yes, I met with the union. My perspective is that I'm going to meet with anybody who reaches out and wants to have a conversation about what I believe in for the school district. I think that's important to building roads and those bridges that will help us develop solutions. I also met with the DFL and like I told them, I would have met with the Republican Party if they had reached out to me, but they never did. I think we need to get past just these prior relationships and biases and at least start talking to people. They didn't endorse me and they didn't need to. I was under that, I knew that would happen or I knew they had that freedom and I, but I'm still going to go and talk to these people as much as possible.
Thank, thank you. Ms. Shelvin Woodcock?
Yes, I did seek the endorsement from Education Minnesota. I have been a union member since 1978. We've often talked about the fact that we're a union household. I was a union steward. And I believe the work that they, or the protections that are offered by the union are incredibly important. And it was a very rigorous process. They made us really defend our beliefs in order to get their endorsement. So I did receive the endorsement from Education Minnesota.
Thank you. Ms. Muscat Jones?
I also sought the endorsement of the Teachers Union for Osseo, Edmond Osseo. I'm also a member of the union in the district in which I work. I am proud that I was chosen to be endorsed by the Teachers Union and the ESP Union because I think that teachers really know what goes on in the district and that's one of the reasons why I'm running. And so I wanted to get that endorsement.
Okay. And Ms. Dawson Walton?
Yes, I did seek Education Minnesota's endorsement and I did receive Education Minnesota's endorsement. I am, our family is also a union family. My husband's a corrections officer, so he's in the Teamsters. We can't address solutions without our educators and without the people that are in our schools every single day working with our kids. And I think that, you know, it's so important that they all know that they're supported by a board and that they're lifted up in their voices and they are part of any solution that we're trying to address.
All right. The next question you are all going to answer. It's my personal question. I ask in every school board forum I ever do. So, tell me about the book you most recently read or what you're reading right now. First responder is Ms. Alexander.
Oh, jeez.
I know.
I haven't read any really good books in the last couple of months. I haven't read any really good books in the last couple of months, that's for sure, because I've been doing all my research on school board happenings. I guess the most recent book that I've read is actually Rich Dad, Poor Dad, which I don't know if any of you remember that from like junior high, I feel like we read it. My sister recommended and sent to me the book again to reread. It's about financial literacy and what rich parents teach their children regarding that compared to poor parents. And me and my eight-year-old have been reading it together, so.
There you go. Ms. Klayman?
I also have not been able to read any of my books, and I just had to return a book that I couldn't even open. I was supposed to be reading An American Marriage, but it's overdue and I had to return it. I also have, I, before that, I've been following William Kent Krueger's series. He writes about northern Minnesota and interactions between the Ojibwe. I love the cultural piece, and I love local authors.
Thank you. Ms. Simons?
Yeah, I'm just thinking, last time I had a chance to read a book cover to cover. I read a lot of journals for the work that I do as I try to become an expert in my field on a range of topics. I like to view TED Talks as another form of informing myself on a wide range of topics. Recently, the name of a book is escaping me, but we read a book that was kind of along the themes of the courageous conversation type of theme, but really how to have difficult conversations with people, especially people that we might have different perspectives than. I think that's really an important skill, to be able to communicate and collaborate with people who might have different ideas.
Ms. Craig?
The last book I finished was Life and Death in Shanghai by Nian Cheng. It was a bestseller in nineteen eighty-seven, and it is her, it's her lived experience in Communist China. And it served as a good reminder about the dangers of socialism, and a lot of information, a lot of good information in that book, and the experiences stick with me. Thank you.
Mr. Burgett?
My reading, since I have switched jobs recently, I'm now trying to get up to speed and know all that I can learn about diabetes and its diagnosis and treatment, learning about analog front ends for circuitry devices, that's what I do. And as far as reading actual books, the one I'm focused on right now is called Death by Meetings, and it's how to basically avoid that sort of problem. And it's about organizational efficiency.
And he's running for a position filled with meetings. Interesting. All right. Ms. Shelvin Woodcock, please.
Chicka Chicka Boom Boom and Llama Llama Red Pyjama. Those are the two I've finished from front to back recently. Actually, I'm in the middle of reading the Book of Revelation in the Bible, and I, like I said, I was kind of a nerdy person, so I do read research, and I do, do TED Talks also. But those are, that's kind of what I've been spending my time with.
There you go. Ms. Quigley?
So I'm currently in grad school, so the book I'm currently reading now is Delivering Healthcare in America.
Wow.
Not very fascinating, actually, no, it's great, but. And it snowed the other day, so we've been reading Polar Express, but I've been skipping a lot of pages. It's a long book.
There you go. Ms. Muscat Jones?
Well, I have to be honest, that I read a lot of partial books. I do a lot of reading on equity, that's my focus where I teach. And I teach four-year-olds, so I've been reading a lot of the same books that Cindy's been reading to her grandkids. But I do want to say that one of my favorite books that I've read recently is The Late Homecomer, I believe it's called, about among immigrant and their experiences, particularly around like funeral experiences and things like that.
Okay. Mr. Goya?
Well, I just today finished reading chapter seven of AP CAC book. Fun reading, I would recommend it. No, but I, I, I just finished reading Things Far Apart by Chinua A. Chibi. He's a renowned writer, and it's about change. It's about, it's about how change come about. And pondering me trying to get on the board is about how do you bring change? And his change was both physical, but it's also mental. It's also racial, it's also financial, it's also economic. So just change by Chinua A. Chibi, Things Far Apart. Shana cannot hold.
Ms. Dawson Walton?
Well, I have a, my youngest is, our youngest is one, so usually at night I'm exhausted. But, you know, the book I recently revisited was The Shack. It got me through some of the hardest days when my dad passed, and I revisit it because it gives me a lot of hope, and I just think it's a really uplifting and meaningful book.
And Mr. Dostal?
I, I'm about two hundred pages into a pretty extensive biography on Napoleon, and I really like reading history because I think it deforses you from a lot of the politics and situations we deal with today, but you can really learn a lot about the human condition. And I find Napoleon fascinating because he did a lot of really great things and a lot of really horrible things for the sake of what he believed in, which I think is prescient for what we're dealing with in, you know, a lot of arguments we have in today's society. So that's a little light reading before I go to bed at night, helps me sleep.
You see, I dive into all your psyches by asking that question, so, there we go. Okay, group two. How would you address the twenty million dollar funding gap for special education? I don't know if it's twenty million dollars in, in this district, but maybe overall. Mr. Burgett?
That is one of my hot buttons. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I think they call it the cross subsidy. So basically, what that means is, in our state, we're required to provide special education services, a hundred percent of the special education services. However, the government says, oh, take that number, you're only going to get paid seventy-six percent of it. That means the rest of that money, that twenty million dollars, comes out of the general budget. In other words, it comes out of all of the other students. And so, well, it's just wrong.
I know. Ms. Alexander?
Well, I'm not going to lie and say this is a topic that I'm most familiar with, but I will say that to look at, I mean, I know a budget has its areas, right? But we can't look at any specific area and say that our special education students are taking away from our normal students, because it's valuable for us to educate and provide any resources necessary to educate all of our students, so.
Ms. Craig?
So this has been an ongoing issue for decades, since the mandate was put forth. And it's been a source of frustration for districts across the straight, across the state. In fact, we've joined forces with other districts to lobby our legislature to try and get these funds taken care of. And we have been unsuccessful. So I don't think there's any one thing that one board member could do to shift this. It's going to take a collective effort, and it's just ongoing pressure at the state level.
Ms. Klayman?
I would agree with the fact that you can't take away money from some students. They're part of the budget in order to.
This is the problem we're having.
The other students that are, that we were required to fund. We're going to have to be creative, we're going to have to collaborate, and we're going to have to perhaps bring in outside resources, community, community and social resources to help us out.
And Ms. Simmons?
Yeah, I have to agree with Mr. Burgett. This is really a frustrating failure at the state legislature level, and this is something that we need to bring awareness to, so much as potentially building communication to our taxpayers and helping them understand that the gap that they have, because we really need to provide the services that are required by our special education students. It's not an option whether we provide those or not, not because it's mandatory, because it's the right thing to do, and we can equip those students to be successful. So we really need to push this to our legislators and have them accept that they have a failure and to rectify it.
Thank you. Group one. There have been six board meetings, regular work session and policy, since the deadline to enter this election. How many of these meetings did you attend, and why are why not, and which ones? First responder is Ms. Muscat Jones.
I missed last night. That was the first one that I believe that I missed. I've been fighting a respiratory illness, but I've gone to everyone that I could possibly go since I filed on August thirteenth.
Okay. Ms. Shelvin Woodcock?
I've attended two of the school board meetings, but I do listen to them and I do read the notes from them. And I was there last night. And, and for me, it's kind of fun, because I worked on all the legislation that they're talking about, so it's very interesting to hear how it's being implemented in districts.
Ms. Dawson Walton?
I have as well been to two of them. I do watch even the work sessions online to kind of get up to speed on those.
Okay. Mr. Dostal?
I've, I've watched two, well, I've watched all the school board meetings. I haven't been to any of them in person, and it's purely based on work and childcare priorities. At this point, we've, we structured it so we can adjust to the new school, the school board session once we get on the board in the fall, though we were set back in the spring, and so we had to deal with that and work around it at this point.
All right. Mr. Goya?
Well, I haven't been to any since I fired, but I've been watching them. But I think the better question would be, how many of our parents, and what's the percentage of our parents that go to these school board meetings? Especially when people are having school board meetings and the announcements is made online, how many people actually go to district279.org to find out when the school boards are in a meeting? I think this is some of the reason why people are asking for geographical representation, because then people can be able to advertise to folks in the places that they go. So let's be culturally relevant when we advertise to folks about things that are important in the district.
Okay. And Mr. Quigley?
So I've, myself, been to zero. I'm a person of routine. I've always just kind of watched them online and read meeting notes, and I also have a three, five, and twelve-year-old. I'm in grad school, and I've just been campaigning, so I've kind of had to prioritize my schedule.
There you go. All right, last thirty-second question for group two, and then we're going into that one minute where you get to address something, okay? And it will be group one first on that one, so. All right. So this one is, sixty percent or more of our adult residents do not have children in this district. How do you plan to reach out and represent them? First responder is Ms. Craig.
So I've had conversations over the years, and in particular, while outdoor knocking this cycle, I've ran into a number of people who don't have kids in the district. Either their kids have grown up, or for whatever reason, they just don't have kids. And all of them have been concerned with strong schools and maintaining strong schools. Why is that important? Strong schools are important because it helps to maintain high property values. That's a big deal to a lot of residents without children. Also, when we invest in strong schools.
Thirty seconds. Mr. Burgett?
Well, I find that most taxpayers, if you don't have kids in the district, you're often motivated by your pocketbook. And one of the things that people care about is, of course, a strong community. Well, if you're educating your population, you're building people that can go right into the workforce, that can build, build a strong economy, that can help raise the, it raises all boats. Education helps everyone, maybe indirectly, but it does help everyone. And so I hope to point that out and remind them that somebody paid for their education too, and for that of their grandkids. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Alexander?
Yeah, I mean, pretty much the same, like, I feel every adult that I've connected with, whether they have kids in the school district or not, are still concerned about providing good education for students, because these students are going to grow up and be leading the country in their retirement ages, and running their nursing homes that they're in, or providing PCA care, and providing the workforce. And we need a strong workforce in this country, and I think everybody is concerned about providing good education to our students to achieve that.
Thank you. Ms. Simons?
Yeah, I love talking about this topic with residents, and I've reached out to a lot of residents since I've been out in the community, because it's not just their pocketbook. There are volunteers, they're engaged in our schools. So it's not just about the financial support that they provide. And there's a clear link, as I sit on the Budget Commission for Brooklyn Park, between strong schools and strong communities. The number one factor in people with children moving in or out of a district is the school system. If you look at your local school and you don't feel that you can put your children there because of the performance of that school, you're not going to move to the community. So we need to have strong schools to attract people to our communities to live and work.
And Ms. Klayman?
It's hard to be last, because I agree with all of them.
I know.
Many times, they're retired, and their kids have grown, but they have grandkids, and it's still important for their grandkids to have education, whether they're here or there. And we're, they're part of the village. We are taking care of all children in our village. And I stress that in importance, that when the children are doing well, the whole community is going to do well.
Thank you. All right, group one, you have up to one minute to talk about a topic that maybe the other group wanted, got to address that you wanted to share about. So our first speaker will be Ms. Dawson Walton.
One of the things I, I wanted to talk about is the support of, of the endorsements we all have sought out. And I strongly believe that these are nonpartisan seats, and they really need to stay that way. I did not seek the DFL or Republican Party and support, letters of support for that reason. I think that we need to have a board that's neutral and that can think critically without any influence of political party. The other thing I wanted to talk about was local representation. I absolutely believe that, you know, our board should be reflecting our communities. I think that we need to explore a little bit about what are the pros and cons to that, because sometimes I think just because you have somebody from one particular area does not mean that they don't represent other areas. And I also wanted to address, let me see here, homeless students. My mom, like I said, runs Youthling, which is a nonprofit homeless youth, and, you know, one of the things we need to do is we need to collaborate better within our key partnerships and relationships to ensure that there's a smoother transition, and we holistically meet the needs of our students.
Thank you. Ms. Muscat Jones?
The first thing that I wanted to address is the special education cross subsidy. It was addressed that there is not enough funding from the state to cover the regulations, but also from the federal level. So I would like to see the board in conjunction with a bunch of parents to go and truly advocate for more funding at the state level, and then to engage in civil engagement and civil, civil engagement for our families, to reach out to their legislators and say, hey, this is really important, we need you to fund it. That's really the one thing that I wanted to address that wasn't really addressed already.
Thank you. Ms. Shelvin Woodcock?
I wanted to talk a little bit more about the youth homelessness issue in the northwest suburban area. My husband and I have started, founded a group in our church that does a lot of work with youth homelessness in the northwest suburban area. And we know for a fact that there are over seven hundred homeless youth in the Brooklyn Park, or in the OCEO School District. And that number has not changed over the last three or four years. It was at twelve hundred at one point, like around two thousand and eight, but it, and so it's come down, but it hasn't changed much. And what those youth need are, they need safety, they need a place to live, they need warm food, they need someone to listen. And so we do a lot around that issue, as far as providing, you know, we cook, we clean, we're going to provide Thanksgiving dinner at the shelter, you know, so it's about the community connecting and supporting our youth.
Thank you. Mr. Dostal?
I'd like to revisit the topic of dividing the school by ge, or the district by geography for representation. I think that's something we seriously need to consider looking at as a district. I think obviously the devil's in the details in how we approach that, but I would think that some sort of combination of at-large and geographic representation would be a good way to balance it. The, you know, theoretically, it's great if we can all identify and, and try to represent every school, and we'll all try to do that. I think everybody goes in with that mentality, but you're influenced by your network, and your network is who you live with, who your kids interact with, and so you're going to be fundamentally more influenced by the people you're plugged into. And it's very difficult to get plugged into other cities and other schools if you have no reason to go down there. And it becomes difficult when you're, you're working this into your general life. And so I really think we need to look at that, to build up the confidence of the district and show that it is well represented, and ensure that one portion of the district is not overrepresented and potentially over-prioritizing their needs.
Thank you. Ms. Quigley?
Yes, I think, I also wanted to touch on the geographical zoning of our district, and I think that that's something that needs to be considered. I do see some, some errors in that as well, because I think somebody could be representing Brooklyn Park and, and Brooklyn Park itself, like our district is very divided. I feel like, I grew up in Brooklyn Park, and I always say, oh, New Brooklyn Park, and people who work in the city, they're like, it's one city. And I'm like, sorry, Dick, it was just potato fields before. But I think that it's really important to have somebody from every city be represented. Our district is so large, there's so, just this whole process, I've learned so much from different pockets of Maple Grove. I live in Maple Grove, and what I would like for my home schools is so different from what Kelsey would like for her home school. So I would also like to say, even though I So I would also like to say, even though I think it's important that we have representation from each city, it's also important that we stop dividing our district. Like, we are one district. Like, we need to come together. We need to work together, and we need to be so blessed that we have such great diversity in our district, because our kids are going to be the best leaders as they go into the workforce. They're already going to be ahead, knowing about the Mung culture, Liberian culture, Somali culture. Like, all of our kids are just going to be great leaders because of that, so we need to be more united.
Thank you. And Mr. Goya?
Well, yeah. So one of the things I want to revisit is just going to be the geographical piece. Osseo School District covers multiple municipalities. And just imagine that we're still running away from making sure that we have representation based on geography. Can you imagine if we just ran the state and say, oh, state representatives should be at large, because we don't want to break apart the state? I think this idea is now born out of a vacuum. I think people sit and they look at the data in the school district, and they look at the schools in the Brooklands, historically have not been doing well at all. And if you have a school board that is just two-mile radius, all of the school board members live within two-mile radius, that is not diversity that we seek. So I think what people are coming to the school board for is to say, look, we need a representation that ensures that the very good diversity we enjoy within the student population gets a reflection on the school board. So I don't think there's anything wrong with asking for representation from wards and geographic location. And just to close real quick, I think we should increase the size. Make it an odd-numbered size, school board.
There we go. All right. Group two, it's your turn for your one minute. Address something that you wished you could have answered from the other side. So Ms. Simons?
Yeah, I want to address the question about the superintendent and their characteristics. So first of all, a primary job of the school board is to hire a superintendent. And so I was disappointed to see that unfulfilled this past year, and frankly, many residents were frustrated to see the expenditure of resources and time and not hire a candidate. I thought we actually came down to two very strong viable candidates. And as an external person looking in, I don't know all of the details, but I feel that we could have made a choice. The role of the CEO needs to bring a compelling vision to achieve our mission, and they need to be able to continue to build a team of district and site leaders to make the day-to-day decisions necessary to improve achievement for our district. I'm going to look for somebody who has experience in driving differential results for a district like ours. To do that, I think the qualities include the ability to make difficult but necessary decisions in the interest of our children, the ability to collaborate with others and achieve results through others, and effective communication skills to ensure multiple perspectives and ideas are considered in decision-making.
Thank you. Ms. Craig?
So I wanted to address the issue about outside endorsement or recommendations from other special interests. In the matter of full disclosure, I did want to say that I ended up seeking and receiving recommendation from the Republican Party, Senate District 34 Republicans. The DFL has been very active in promoting their candidates, as well as the union. I wanted additional help in promoting myself and getting my message out to the community. So in the interest of full disclosure, I did want to list that. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Brigette?
The question that I was most interested in is about the superintendent's search from last year. I know that a lot of the community members are probably wondering, as has been mentioned, why we did not successfully choose a candidate last time. And I think it boils down to the fact that the two candidates that we wound up with, neither one of them had the background and depth that we really needed to run the district. And we needed the support from across multiple perspectives, and it just, we just, we couldn't come to a consensus. And at that point, you need to say, are we willing to say, to choose somebody that's that we're not all behind? No. I think our superintendent deserves better. I think our district deserves better. So we needed to have the courage to be able to say, nope, this is not working this time. We'll choose an interim. We'll think about this some more. We'll get behind it, and we'll do a better job. And I will remind the public that the people you see here today, the people that you vote in, will be choosing that new superintendent. Choose carefully. Thank you.
Ms. Alexander?
Well, I also want to talk about the three attributes I would look for in a superintendent, because, as mentioned, that is the primary role of the school board and is a huge decision that needs to be made for the incoming school board members. For me, I would look for somebody with a diverse background, because without a diverse background, it is hard to have an understanding. Like, Dave pointed out, you are a product of your environment, and without a diverse environment, it is hard for you... That would be reflective of our school district. It would be hard for, hard-pressed to say that that person would be able to represent our district. History of being a collaborative leader, need to be able to listen to people and work with people well in order to be a good leader, and enthusiastic about improving outcomes. Yeah.
Okay. And Ms. Clayman?
I also was going to talk about the superintendent characteristics that I would look for. He or she has to have a strong ability to bridge the communication between the board, the parents, the community, the teachers. Be valuing of diversity and recognizing racial differences. Can't be colorblind. It's not, like, you can't wash over it. You have to recognize it, own it, and deal with it. And leadership is not about being the best. Leadership is about making others better. I want them to value that.
This is going to be hard to narrow this down. So we are now going to do your one-minute final statements, and we're going to start from the reverse order that we started 90 minutes ago. All right. Here we go. Your final statements. "In summary, how do you intend to best serve the school district and move it forward?" Our first speaker is Ms. Clayman.
I'm aware that on the surface, I appear not to be the most qualified candidate. My background is that of a nurse. I don't have a degree in education or public health, and only had a brief leadership position on a PTA. However, I have a willingness to serve, a passion for education, and a drive to give all of our children a strong equitable education. I will continue to support and promote our areas of strength and challenge our schools and parents to improve our areas of weakness. I will go to school, school, door-to-door, whatever it takes to assess and meet the needs of our teachers and our students. Yes, I'm just a nurse, but remember, J.K. Rowling was just a waitress.
Ms. Simons?
I've had the unique opportunity to live, work, and serve in a variety of different communities and environments. This has given me a perspective that enables me to see through the eyes of our stakeholders, and most importantly, the families and the students that we serve. I also have the finance and strategy background needed to oversee a district operation of over $300 million, 21,000 students, and 3,000 employees. I have the experience needed to collaborate with multiple stakeholders, and I will bring a results and solution-oriented perspective to solve our current challenges. The board we elect on November 6th will hire our next superintendent, and their primary charge will be to turn results around for this district. If I'm elected, I will ensure we hire a superintendent who has the leadership, experience, and passion to move our district forward. I believe we have a strong district with many strengths, and we can leverage and accelerate those strengths to solve our challenges and enable successful outcomes for students. I invite you to visit tonyasimons.com, where I discuss tonight's topics more in depth than tonight's timeframes allow, and I ask for your vote on November 6th.
Ms. Craig?
Well, again, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight to share my thoughts and ideas. As I see it, the best way for me to serve, or that I can serve the community, is through advocating and being a voice for those in the community I represent. Strong schools are important to me, but so is standing up for my convictions and being a good steward of taxpayer dollars. School board members, in my view, are the checks and balances on administration, but are also key in helping drive the mission of the district forward. What is the district's mission? It is to inspire and prepare all students with the confidence, courage, and competence to achieve their dreams, contribute to community, and engage in a lifetime of learning. That mission is at the core of who we are in Osseo Area Schools, and it guides my decision-making. So thank you for your time, and I appreciate it.
Mr. Brigette?
There are many significant issues that need continued focus and dedicated follow-through. These include reducing the achievement gaps among student groups, responding to the predicted increase in enrollment, which may entail construction, boundary changes, and/or levies, and recruiting our next superintendent to lead this large and complex organization. I believe that my experience will continue to be valuable. As school board members, we are entrusted with two of the most important things in anyone's life: their children and their money. My goal has been and continues to be maximize student achievement and minimize taxpayer expense. I sincerely ask for your vote on November 6th. And remember, don't forget, vote Brigette. Thank you.
What was that? Just kidding. I'm getting a little punchy. I can't help it. Okay. Ms. Alexander?
Well, it is your last forum, so you're pretty excited. Again, my name's Richard Alexander. I think that I would best serve the district, because I intend to be a voice for all members of our district: educators, families, and the students. I believe that I could best serve the district, because I have a diverse background myself. I'm passionate about childhood education. I believe that, I know the sun's going, but the children are our future. And we need to look at that, and that needs to be our priority. Obviously, the budget is important. Obviously, we don't have endless funds for everything, but we need to get creative and find funds for providing the best world-class education for our students. We can become a great school district. We just need to be bold about it, and we need to be intentional in our actions, using research-based solutions. And I believe I'd be a great fit for the school board, because I'm passionate about our success. Thank you.
Ms. Dawson Walton?
Well, first of all, I'd be honored to serve on the Osseo School Board. Like I said earlier, we're at a critical crossroads, and it's time we take a new approach to some of our most pressing issues. And we needed some different skill sets on the board to address these issues, to make sure each and every student has equitable access and opportunity to a top-notch educational experience. We need to strengthen and connect our community by building the bridges necessary to set our path on a sustainable path to excellence. I want our district to lead Minnesota in education, and I believe we have everything it takes. We have all the ingredients to make this happen. I want to support our district employees. They're critical to the success of our students. And engage our families in new ways to create a supportive network for our students in and outside of our schools.
Mr. Dostal?
And Kel... Oh, sorry. Kelseyforosseo.com.
Mr. Dostal?
I want to thank everybody for being here tonight and watching on TV, who's able to. I appreciate the level of engagement. I think we need a lot more of that in our community today. I think what I bring to this district and the school board is specifically a diversity of experience and perspective. And I can bring a lot of best practices from the other organizations and experiences I've had into this district and how we run our school board. My priorities will continue to be sound fiscal management of the district, developing solid plans for how we deal with capacity issues, ensuring that we do have access to early childhood education, as I've said twice tonight. And then lastly, ensuring we get a solid superintendent in place. As many people have stated, that role is really critical, and so really think long and hard about who you choose and who you think they'll put in that position. Then lastly, if anybody wants to find out more, you can look me up at daviddostalforschoolboard.com or the same name on Facebook. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Muscata-Jones?
You've heard from everyone else the tasks that we have as a school board that we're going to do. I'm not going to mention those again. I'm going to talk about my greatest strength. My greatest strength as a teacher and as a human being is my ability to build relationships across cultures and backgrounds. I want to use that strength to build relationships with all the stakeholders in our district. Students perform better when they have positive relationships with their school and with their teachers. Teachers and administrators are better at their jobs if they have positive relationships with each other and their leaders. A school district is stronger if the board is transparent and authentically listens to the community. I plan to truly listen, to be authentic, to advocate for the best possible education for our students. Another strength that I have is the ability to look at the bigger picture and to take multiple perspectives. I think someone with a big-picture view and having taught across ages and across cultures would be beneficial to our district. Jackiefor279.com.
And Mr. Goya?
Well, I want to be thankful to everybody who showed up and watching online or however they're watching right now. But I would be remiss if I didn't say, if I didn't acknowledge my wife, who's always with me, leaves work, goes to school, goes door-knocking with me, simply because she believes in our children, that we can do better. So what do I bring? I bring my lived experience. I bring my lived experience as a teacher. As a guy who has an electrical engineering degree, chose to leave it or come into the classroom, because I chose not to sit on the sidelines or sit in my living room to complain. I chose to have a skin in the game. And so I bring that. I bring my ability to be able to make sure that I can collaborate with teachers across the district, because District 279 has a world-class working force. All we need to do is to have people that can be able to leverage that. And so we need to make sure we elect people that will ensure that we stop this continuous visions, crisis of mission and vision, where we can't have a superintendent and we have to go four-star every time. Voteczgoya.com. I'm on Facebook, czgoya.com, and I hope I can carry on supporting November 6th. Thank you.
Ms. Shelvin Woodcock?
The Osseo Area Schools already contain many of the elements that are needed to become a world-class school district. I have been able to visit most of our schools, and what I find is our rich student diversity reflects a global perspective, and our educators honor that. We need to continue this trajectory towards excellence, and our leadership must reflect a diversity of ideas and a commitment to represent the entirety of the district while demanding equity for all students. As a professional who's had the privilege of working with schools from a state level, I bring a fresh perspective and a unique understanding of the challenges and possibilities facing our district. I'm very approachable. I'm a good listener. I treat everyone with respect, and I believe in public service and in public education. As a school board member, I will make sure we hire a superintendent that's a visionary leader, and will work on addressing the polarization in our district. I will set high expectations for each student, teacher, and school leader. Cindyfor279.org.
Thank you. And last but not least, Ms. Quigley?
So as I mentioned before, you know, I am a product of this district. We can sit here and say everything wrong about this district, but I think a lot of the times, we don't praise what District 279 does. So first and foremost, there's always going to be work to do, but I am still very proud of our district. With that being said, I'm also a parent in this district. I have three kids that I've kept in our schools. Some people decide to send their kids to Prentasis or other schools. I've kept my kids in this school, because I want to navigate through this district with my family and help our district grow. With my background in public health, I also understand how education impacts long-term health outcomes. I understand how diversity can be disenfranchised for people of color. I understand that I am young and innovative, and that might be scary, and I talk about race a lot, but I think that there's always a stigma. We have a lot of Mung schools that are charter schools that end at grade eight, and they transition from going to schools, people that look, everybody looks like them, to public schools. What are we doing as a district to make sure that we're bridging that gap? And then also, what are we doing with our kids who go to Rush Creek, Bass Lake, as they go to school that become more diverse? How are we preparing those students to merge and live together and grow and learn together? So vote Miami279.com.
Once again, on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Brooklyn Park, Osseo, and Maple Grove, and the North Hennepin Area Chamber of Commerce, I would like to thank the candidates for agreeing to participate in tonight's forum. I would like to thank the voters for attending and participating by submitting excellent questions, and I would like to thank the viewing audience as well. Remember, if we could not get to your question tonight, or if you have further questions for the candidates, we invite you to contact them directly with your concerns. Please remember to get out and vote by or on Tuesday, November 6th, as for 279, your vote truly, truly counts. Thank you, and have a wonderful evening.